Also, we had access to the local workforce boards and other workforce partners to address and recruit other leagues. Design work space based training to provide hiring of companies with specialized skills. Work-based learning programs. We have various work-based learning programs that includes the on-the-job training, incumbent worker training, customized training, and workplace fundamentals. And we also have registered apprenticeships. OJT, that's what they're acronym for, on-the-job training. We assist new hired employees by providing the businesses with some sort of solution to some of the problems that they have in hiring new individuals. These individuals, the companies can receive up from 50 to 75 percent of the wage rate during this training period. But I just said now, 50 to 75 percent wage rate. This is at no cost to their employer or their employee. What we would do is that we would assist them by the time that they're in training, they may go to training for, well, the first, you know, we call it probationary period. They may take 90 days or 180 days. During this time, we have a specific salary range because we have to have a livable wage. We can't offer to them if they're making $10.99, that's $11 an hour. So we went up to another level and said, "We pay $12.99." That's the lowest or the minimum that this employer can receive, this employee. So at that time there, between that six, the three to six month period, we will pay or reimburse 50 percent of that salary range. Because you know that one of the biggest costs for hiring a new employee is the cost of training. Getting that person up to par to make the company more productive. Also, what we also have is incumbent worker training assistance. This is when individuals who are trained, businesses that are trained to a new system, and you have to train the present individuals who are employed by you to operate that system. We can assist with that also. By providing them with a 10 to 50 percent based on the company's size and the cost of the training. This is a benefit not only for the businesses but for the employee. Realize that our two main customers are the business and the employee. We could then help design specialized training. Many companies have to have specialized or individuals before they're employed, they must receive a specialized training. We can assist them by creating a job training program, or you have them go to school and receive certification in that area. Now realize, our program, we do anything from skydiving if you see what I'm saying. And I'm just not saying that literally, because we do have individuals who have gone to skydiving. And we have, we have several journalists who have, who are now working on the pipeline from North America to France underwater. Great salary, but I don't think I want to do that job. But, these are some of the programs that we can customize for the business for both existing areas and those who meet that WIOA eligibility. It's very important that the client who are interested in taking part in this program, that they apply and become eligible for the WIOA. I will speak to you later on the requirements for WIOA, but I can give you right briefly, the basic requirement is unemployed. We don't want to make South Fulton one of the places that there's so much development going on, and we don't satisfy our citizens. When I say "our citizens," I'm talking about the residents right here. I believe in maintaining a strong workforce so the individual can both live, work, and play within the Aratropolis. We don't want to have to go to Alpharetta to recruit someone. We want to recruit and train that individual here. We even work with the school systems. We have individuals where that, if they graduate from high school, and you ever heard the Bridge Program where they go to high school and go to the community college? If a person, let me give you an example of an area, a nursing program. They're going to school for nursing both here at the high school level and they're going to the community college. After that person complete their skills in that area, if they meet a income barrier, they may be eligible for the WIOA assistance in reference to, we will pay for them to go to nursing school. I mean, when I say "pay for them," I'm talking from the hat to the shoe. We even assist them with childcare assistance, supportive services. We don't, we want to eliminate all barriers for the individual who are coming into our workforce. There's no excuse on why you can't do, it's just a question of whether you want to do. Also, we have a workplace fundamental program, which we, this program we partner with the employers and local training providers in the work source Aratropolis to help WIOA eligible participants learn the basic skill into entry-level position. Now, I know most of us are under 21, but you know, common sense ain't common no more. We will make them work great. We will provide for them specialized training, almost like holding their hands, but we're not going to hold their hand because we're not going to do it for them. We will assist them and can get rid of all of the barriers. If they want it, they can receive it. Also, we have various locations that offer to the fundamentals that offer employees to, who have open full-time positions but have not been able to find qualified candidates. Our candidates are right here, in the South of America, in our Aratropolis area. You would like to see these individuals get the proper training. Yes, we have individuals who become, who have been incarcerated, who are now back as bottom citizens. It's almost like a reintegration program for them, because let me tell you, some of these journalists have some good skills. I believe that a man who has a skill will be a man who will never be out of work. Also, we like a partnership with the high-demand occupation. We're looking at aviation. Do you realize that we are in need of air traffic controllers? And guess what? As an air traffic controller, a person can get out of high school and start a position at $42,000 a year with no skill left. When I say "no skill left," I understand of aviation, but we have schools right here that provide aviation training. Why should we give that up? We can do it right here, in our South Fulton area. We want to keep the funds, these are funds that are available to them. We also look at logistics. Logistics is not just picking up a box and storing it. We have to have brokers. We have to have someone who do quantitative transportation. We want individuals who can go into the multimedia. Everybody ain't going to be a Tyler Perry. But at the same time, we can offer to them specialized training in the area of multimedia, doing the light bulbs, doing certain things on the set. Also tell them about the different unions that they should be a part of while they're in school. And we also have BioLife, which is our health and medical areas. You understand, basically those areas where we've been training physicians who are needing certifications who become unemployed. Our biggest criteria is unemployment. Also, we have the agriculture. I don't know if you realize, but you know, the biggest agriculture, biggest industry is our agriculture industry because of the fact. You ever heard of 4H? That's a scholarship right there. Just be a part of it. But if our students don't know, like they're not aware of it, they won't do anything about it. You know, we took 4H when I was growing up, there's some place we can go fun and have a good time and make strawberry preserves. I'm a Savannahian, so we understand. Also, we also provide employee screening. If a company needs a certain type of employee, we'll look at what they're looking for and provide that for them, the specialized screening. We do various assessments. Our assessments go up to $5,000, but it's at no cost to the individual or the employer. As you notice, I did not say anything about this being free. All I'm saying to you, this, this is at no cost to you. We have to put value on it because you already paid for it. This is going to be free. Some people call it free, but you know, people have a tendency to don't take value in free. Also, we provide them a labor market report. What's out there? We look at everything. We see a 3.9 unemployment rate. Sometimes that is not completely true, because individuals have been unemployed so long now, they're just dropping out the workforce. This is unacceptable. We want to make sure we have the funds, we have the opportunity to take advantage of this. This is not only for Aratropolis, this is for the whole entire metro area. Aratropolis is one of the biggest places that is owned. All of us are part of Aratropolis, whether we understand it or not, because we are right here in its footprint. And I have had the pleasure of going to visit some of the work sites, and the companies are looking for individuals. We got to continue producing this town pool for the businesses to grow. We want businesses to come here. There's some people all over the world, they've seen how things have operated, all the way from Edmonton all the way to Shanghai. We wanted to make sure that this area here, of South Fulton, is getting their resources because we have one of the biggest logistics area here. When I say logistics, the transportation. We even fund for individuals to receive CDLs at no cost to you. So, in saying that, we also like a partnership with the county and city economic development. I see Mr. Odie over there. How you been? Also, we work with the Chamber of Commerce. We got, we have a strong Chamber of Commerce here, and I've been working with them for the past six months, and we have seen a whole lot of changes. We've seen new openings, new hospitals, new hotels, something that has not been ever done. We are economically developed to be a prosperity, a prosperous region. We work with the technical schools, and working with the technical schools, we provide training for them. I'm not talking about just the student, I'm talking about the parents too. I believe in a wraparound service. We would help the parents get a job. If two parents is working in a household, the children can know that they have responsibilities. We also work with the youth, and working with the youth, we go into the schools. Because I feel that, one of the things that teachers now have difficulty with behavior because they have, the children are having stress and no one to monitor them. We want to maintain that two-parent household. We want to have livable wages for each and every one of our parents and students. So one day, when they go to the mother and father and say, "I need a new pair of cleats to play ball in," it's not a stressful thing for that parent who's a single parent or a two-parent, to have an income or a trade or a business skills to make themselves more marketable. We want them to have the opportunity to flow into our Aratropolis workforce. Aratropolis is something that is taking off. Either you get on the plane or you just sit on the runway. We all have to be a part of it. We all have stakes, stakes in this. We are stakeholders. Now, how can we be partners? We would like to partner with you. We would like to provide you with these services. I have given some literature in reference to how to become eligible for the WIOA. There's various WIOA offices around, what you did in Fulton, we have it all, City of Atlanta, we have it all in the counties around, we have a great, I work with the ARC, Atlanta Regional Commission. We have over seven counties. And guess what? I love when they had to come here because of the fact that I felt that we need, have a need for the services that I can provide, and we have a great leadership down here. We have great mayors, we have great partners in Aratropolis, I mean, from Porsche all the way down to the small business. We like the small business because the small business is what runs the country. It's not just the big companies, you see the Deltas, all of them are doing great. They may not need our services, but we want to make it available to the businesses in this area. And if you'd like to be a part of the Aratropolis, or you can reuse some of the services that we have to offer, I have placed up here my name along with a good phone number. You can call me anytime, but you know, after five, I will call you back by Monday. Oh, I will call you back by nine o'clock the following day. Also, we have, you can contact by email. My email address is cecovington@atlantaregional.org. We're not located far from here. My office is not far from here. I'm available to you, and most of all, it's personal. Because I like to see our business grow, but more important, I like to see our community grow. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact me at your convenience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Any questions? If you have any questions. Hi, how are you? Thank you for, thank you for your presentation.
Okay, I apologize.
But I have, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
My first question is, was the program federally funded?
Yes, it is.
To what extent?
That's what we received the dollars to provide for the training. That's what the workforce investment opportunity act, you may know, you ever heard, I might get to, you know, you ever heard of CETA?
Yeah, all type of.
See, I've been talking about that, the JCPA?
Yes.
This is another, each time you get a new regime, they change the name.
Okay. That's because if you go to the bank, you're out there.
Oh, okay, I was trying to say.
And my, my second question, I guess, is more for the city than for you. Because I would like to know if we have any data on what our unemployment, what our unemployment is? And before you answer, just let me say that I was kind of surprised from hearing an Aratropolis presentation where they said that 15 percent of the employees live in our city, and 70, over 70 percent of the people in our city work elsewhere.
That is right.
That was a real eye-opener to me. But, but I would like, like to know about whether or not we have any data on unemployment.
Actually, as he mentioned, the state actually provides this data to the 19 local areas for which we're a part of, one which is Fulton County, is our local area. And so we do receive that information from the state, as everyone else does, and so we are aware of those statistics. I think he could probably also attest to some of those travel patterns and some of the data that we utilize to analyze that transient nature of employment in the Aratropolis. It's one based off of census data, but it's also based off of unemployment figures, and so as they pull those, those things change from quarter to quarter, also based on those relocation. So I'd say we use the state-level data, but there probably is a need for some more localized data from those local areas.
So could you really share some of that? I would like to see some of that, to see what it looks like, even if we, you know, need some additional information.
So I think you would have to tell us what data you would like. So the state provides it first to the local areas, and then it's provided to local municipalities on request. I, for different reasons, get the national and state-level stuff in general, but if you let us know what you, what type of data you'd like, it's not a problem, we can request it.
Then the last one, real, real quick, and this is more for the city as well, is if we're going to participate, then I would like to know what kind of outreach will we have to be able to, you know, find out who really needs it, and how much it's going to cost, and who in the city is going to handle it.
So I think the best thing about partnering, whether it be with Aratropolis or our partners at Fulton County, is those local areas are responsible for that. So their federal allocations actually provide for outreach, there's no cost to the city or the participant, is actually paid through our federal tax dollars, so there's no additional cost.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Oh, we, I'm sorry. I didn't promise you to cancel me.
I just wanted to provide appointment information for Councilman Gill, that the Georgia Power stats that we didn't see, received the last page, has lots of employment data, unemployment data, even breaks it down by sector, so hopefully we'll be able to go over that in our work sessions soon. Okay? Councilman Gill.
I just want to make a point of reference. Thank you for coming and bringing this to see this out Fulton. I met with Mr. Clayton, the vision, and I thought this would be a good presentation to bring before the council. But I also want to make a point that what he said in his presentation is true, that the numbers for unemployment are a bit skewed, because if you don't have anybody coming in using unemployment services, they're coming into the rock, play with all of unemployment, they are not counted. Some people get frustrated with the jobs, and they just fall out of the job market. And so those individuals are not counted. Is it possible for us to partner with both Fulton County and Aratropolis? And the reason I'm asking is because I recently read an article where, and I think it was specific to Atlanta, where they were saying that their services, their work source services, people stopped using them because they didn't feel like they were very helpful. So, I would like to know, can we partner with both the cities? Does this seem manageable?
Yeah, so there's no restriction on who you partner with, though. With IOA, the dollar follows the participant, and so depending on where the participant is located at, then they can easily access services. As a citizen, I mean, as a city, there's no restriction on who we partner with or how, as long as we do it within their federal regulations and guidelines. So as members of the Aratropolis, and I think we actually paid our membership here recently, or we will be before the end of the week, we'll have access to all of those services. But, as a municipality within Fulton County, by default, our residents have access to those services, and we have been actively speaking with Al Nash and Ms. Villalay, and now actually, the guy used to work for me, Mr. Lacy, is over there now, and so Brett Lacy as well, to figure out how we can work closer with them. So their director, he hasn't been on 30 days yet. If he's been on two weeks, but we've already had some conversations, and it's not, not a problem, not difficult, and we're actually looking at some formal partnerships here in the future.
Any further questions, Mr. Covington? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Covington.
Thank you.
Mr. Bray? The presentation is being made by Mr. Tony Phillips, Parks and Recreation Director, Parks and Recreation Youth Athletic Association in Parks, Master Plan Process Presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tony Phillips, Parks and Recreation. I'm here this afternoon to go through a presentation to address two specific areas, those being youth athletic associations in our current youth football season, and then I will transition into some information I'd like to share with you in reference to our Parks Master Plan In summary, in a very general sense, youth athletic associations, as you're probably aware, are registered nonprofits through this Georgia Secretary of State. They are operated almost exclusively, well, exclusively by volunteer board members. These are parents and other members of our community who donate their time and effort to operate these organizations, and it can be a significant amount of time. Typically, to be a key stakeholder or board member, it requires 25, 30, sometimes more than that, hours on a weekly basis. They primarily provide youth athletic programming around specific activities, them being football, baseball, soccer, and cheerleading. And we are currently during this fall season in our regular youth football season, and it is actually, and this is key, the first youth athletic season we've undertaken under our new Parks ordinance in the city of South Fulton. Registration in recent seasons with youth athletic associations has begun earlier and earlier. Youth athletics in general, the seasons have expanded, it's become more of a year-round activity in many senses. With football, it's not uncommon that youth athletic registrations for that sport begin as early as April. This has been the case for the last several years. There's some degree of competition among associations, and associations who don't register typically begin in spring, have a hard time attracting some of the players, and so over the last several years, that trend has developed where registration typically begins somewhere in early spring. Upon the transition of the department, as you know, on May 28th, we began operating under the city's Parks ordinance, and that along with it, some very specific changes to how we manage youth athletic associations and our relationship with them. Two that I'd like to highlight briefly are fees. There are fees that are due to the city for registration maintenance that are included in Parks ordinance, and the ordinance specifically says, "Those fees shall be paid via the city's Civic Rec online registration system." Also, section 7003 references participant registration in general, and says that all of that shall be conducted through the city Department of Parks and Recreation. Those seem fairly straightforward, but there are significant changes from what has typically occurred with our associations in previous years. So as aforementioned provisions in the Parks ordinance, again, requires our registration to be done through our Civic Rec online registration system, and in that process, the city retains the required maintenance fee, which is $10 per resident for each registration, and $20 per non-resident. And then we remit the balance of those registration fees to the youth athletic associations. Included in that ordinance is language that speaks to compliance. Failure to comply on the part of one of our youth athletic associations would bring about the prospect of disallowing practices and games at some point until compliance and or resolution could be implemented. There's a specific three-step process detailed in the ordinance for how we go about doing that. And so that process is applicable anytime we have a youth athletic association that is not in compliance with our Parks and Recreation ordinance. Now, our timing in terms of when the department transitions on May 28th didn't optimally align with the start of youth football season activities for the reason I mentioned earlier, which it is commonplace that these associations would begin registering in early spring. And so, as they typically would, many of them began registering as early as April, some a little earlier than that. They have some league fees that have to be paid as they move forward, and so that process began prior to May 28th on the part of our associations. We consulted with our city manager and city attorney on some of the relevant issues related to some of the recommendations that we will go through in just a moment. Now, these are contingent upon any interim changes being approved by this council, and there are no legal concerns. We've consulted with Ms. Walker, our city attorney, in that regard. Department has also maintained a very active dialogue with our youth athletic association stakeholders. There's a process of managing change, and this has been a significant change for these associations, and we wanted to, as best we could, meet with them on a fairly regular basis to make them aware of what the changes were, and to talk about the process moving forward. And as we have moved forward in the timing issues and some of the other issues that have been concerned on part of our associations have come forward, we met with them in an effort to come up with some consensus around this specific initial season. Since they started registering before we had Civic Rec up and running, we wanted to figure out, could we have a dialogue around a consensus on how we could move forward for this specific season? In that dialogue, the consensus suggestions that we came up with center around three specific areas. The first one being the registration and maintenance fees. As I mentioned, they began collecting those fees prior to our transition to the city on May 28th. Some of those fees had been collected, and in some instances, some expenditures have been made prior to May 28th. We have, in our consensus dialogue with them, in lieu of retroactively requiring them to put all of those fees into Civic Rec, which had been collected prior to the implementation of that system, each youth athletic association would be required to pay all maintenance fees for each registered, $10 per resident, $20 per non-resident, directly to the Department of Parks and Recreation in the city of South Fulton. Additionally, as required by our ordinance, each association would submit a financial statement detailing its budget to include a balance sheet and bank statements. Documents would be submitted within 14 days of the season's completion. Data, this is the next area that we wanted to come up with a way to manage. All registration data must be entered into Civic Rec. Each youth athletic association under this interim plan would provide detailed registration information to the Department of Parks and Recreation for all participants. We have roughly 200 registrations currently in the system for Welcome Hall, 120 for Sandtown, and 51 currently for O National. And we want that data in the system by all available means. In some cases, that would mean importing some data from previously used registration systems, and where possible, we will also work with the certified leagues that each of these associations participated in to get their certified rosters as a means of checking ballots, to ensure that all registrations are in the system for each player that is actively engaged with one of our associations. Lastly, concessions has been a very large concern for us in past years. We've been working with our purchasing manager, Mr. Kirk, to craft an RFP with the goal of identifying a viable, revenue-positive concessions provider for the entire park system and for the city. That's a long-term option, and it will move forward, we've already had that meeting with Mr. Kirk, but will not be in place for the current football season. There have been some very significant concerns about unregulated and unpermitted concessions at various parks. In order to implement a viable concessions option for each park for the current season, specific conditions needed to be met. Among those would be the following: only specific, selected, and approved vendors at each park will be permitted to provide concessions. Secondly, each association has provided a detailed description of the vendors they propose to use for the 2018 football season. O National Athletic Association has a full-operated concession stand that has been run for the last several years by the, by the association. run for the last several years by the association itself, Mr. Nate Monford, and that will be their plan for the 2018 season. The Santown Youth Sports Association has a parent, Mr. Taveras Rachel, who will provide concession services during the 2018 season at Santown. At Welcome All, it's selected two specific vendors, TNT Barbecue and Cool Zone, to provide concessions on game days. Our concession stand operations would be subject to regular inspection by the city and the Department of Parks and Recreation. That information would also be passed along, not only to our staff, but to our park patrol officers. We also took the additional step, particularly at Welcome All, we wanted to create an access point where we could control access to the football field in the adjacent area. Working with our parks maintenance staff, we've constructed an entry gate there at Welcome All, so that we can post staff members there to be sure we have reasonable control over who is there and making sure that anyone's there that's visiting has a permit. We have also rearranged our staffing schedule to try to have as many of our recreation staff as possible available at each park on Saturday to assist our park patrol with ensuring that we have the necessary monitoring of all activities on game days. As required by the Parks Ordinance, all youth athletic associations provide certificate of insurance specifically listing the city of South Fulton as insured, and also as required by the ordinance, these associations submit, as I mentioned earlier, a financial statement detailing its budget to include a balance and bank statements. Documents should be submitted within fourteen days of the season's completion, which be inclusive of all concession revenues as well. The interim revenue, data, and concessions plan that I just covered will be applicable solely to the 2018 football season. The city and the department will work to provide long-term viable options throughout all of our parks in conjunction with the park ordinance that will supplant any interim considerations. In essence, the season's activities, as far as registration, began before the department's transition on May twenty-eighth, and these suggestions to the mayor and council are to allow us to get through this initial season, beginning with youth basketball, which is internally operated by our staff. All registrations and all other issues related to youth athletics will go directly through Civic Rec, as detailed in the ordinance. And then the youth athletic association's next active season would be soccer in the fall, and baseball would also be the next full season in Civic Rec. At that time, we would expect full compliance for all elements of the Parks Ordinance. Next, I wanted to talk briefly about our Parks Master Plan Process. On January of this year, the city council adopted Resolution two zero one eight zero zero seven, which commissioned a Parks Master Plan to include organizational, operational, maintenance, financial, service, program analysis, needs assessment, demographic trends, and recommendations and strategies for improvement and implementation. One of the primary elements of this effort around Master Plan is making sure that we engage the community and insist and engage their assistance with designing local standards, prioritizing parks, recreation, trail, and open space citywide. We think this is a unique opportunity to really sit and listen to our residents and to hear district by district what their view of parks is, not only where we are, or where we need to go, and what our future plans need to look like. I think that dialogue will be beneficial in a number of different ways. A Parks Master Plan is a unifying vision for a livable and sustainable community. It's a public declaration of our goals and principles. It gives us a seamless and sustainable system of great parks, public spaces, natural areas, cultural areas, ringways, trails, and streets. There's some really key elements in most master plans for parks, which is, one, existing conditions analysis. We certainly want to look at where we are currently, that helps us to decide where we need to go. We then look at needs and priorities and assess those in our dialogue with our residents and stakeholders, like our council members and mayor. Then there needs to be a long-range vision that guides our decision-making, and as we bring all of that together, an implementation strategy, and finally, a plan to be presented to the mayor and council for adoption. We are working again with our purchasing manager, Mr. Kirk, to issue this RFP within the next thirty days, forty-five to sixty days, as did this election, and refer to the mayor and council. We believe this will be a cornerstone and a springboard to drive our decision-making going forward with an informed plan that has been collaborative with our residents, our leadership, and our mayor and council, and it will open the door to additional opportunities, not least among those are grants and other funding opportunities, many of which look for a well-developed master plan as a key in applying for that grant funding, as well as agency accreditation, which is what we aspire to in the very near future. With that, I will pause to take questions from our council members.
Very good. Ms. Gilley on that.
I know that we have a soccer club, I think that's the best word to put to it. I don't know if they want to be an association or not, so that's something that I'm going to look into for the district. But the other thing, too, is that before we went to the new system, I do know that there was a group that had kickball and some other things included. So now that we're in a new, new system, are they included in, in the newness, or are they outside of the newness?
So the only kickball affiliation we currently have is at Old National, we're working with World Changers Athletic Ministry. They have a kickball program that we're working with at Old National. I do know that there are several other kickball programs in the community that we've had some dialogue with, and so we're looking to move in a new direction with engaging some of those kickball associations. Soft Fulton Alliance is our soccer association. They're at Wilkes-Barre in District Four and have done a really good job over the last several years, and so they are an athletic association, and so they're currently working actively with us and doing a great job.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilley.
This master plan, I know that it will deal with the overall design of our system, making sure that we get a park in District Seven, but I want to make sure that it also make, it also takes a look at the best use of fields and facilities. I've heard comments and complaints from constituents about access to the tennis center or private contractors at this facility or that facility. So will the people that conduct this Parks Master Plan look at staffing and athletic associations and all of those things, and will they also look at, there is a, or I'm going to ask that they look at, there's a trend now in more progressive cities of using parks as community centers, community health centers? Is that something that, are those things that we'll be looking at in the master plan?
Yes, those are two key elements. I mentioned briefly that it typically begins with existing condition analysis. Well, they look very critically, not only at what we're doing, but more important in terms of what is working well and where there are distinct areas for improvement. Is our staffing model where it needs to be? Are we utilizing the spaces that we have appropriately? Do we need to change the way we approach facilities and parks? It really begins with a blank slate in terms of where we go, but it starts with existing conditions analysis, understanding where we are and what the deficiencies are, so that we can have a dialogue with our communities about what would work better. In addition to that, it provides some expertise as we seek through an RFP to have a consultant to come in, to begin to look at some of the cutting-edge strategies that maybe we've not considered, and begin to have a dialogue with our communities about some of the things that have been done in other areas of the country. Health considerations are a key aspect of a master plan. It can open the door to grant opportunities as we find ways to engage health disparities through Parks and Recreation, can open the door for us to receive grant funds that we may not be eligible for today, and so looking at things like childhood obesity and senior health conditions and figuring out how we do a better job of providing some positive assets in those areas could help us not only in meeting the needs of our residents better, but in providing resources that maybe we don't currently have today.
And then the last suggestion, maybe it's already happening, but also I know that on Old National in particular, there are many families that can't afford the athletic fees, and so I, I wonder if we could have a, an income-based pricing structure so that less fortunate families will still be able to have access to all of these activities?
I think that's a key consideration. One of the unique aspects of a master plan process is it will be district by district, community by community, and neighborhood by neighborhood, so that it doesn't need to be one size fits all. We understand that our city is very diverse, and that the needs may not be the same in one neighborhood as they are in another. We want this plan to be specific to the communities that we serve, and so where those considerations are appropriate and where the mayor and council think that's the direction we should move in, we certainly want to make sure that we don't take a cookie cutter approach, but that we have a plan that really meets the needs of the communities we're trying to serve.
Thank you, please.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. What I want to ask, the number fifty-one for Old National, that seems kind of light?
Yes, ma'am. I'll speak to that certainly. Old National is below where it is traditionally been over the last five to eight years. I coached there from two thousand and fourteen to, actually, two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fifteen, and at that time, we've probably had four times as many players there. And so over the years, some of those teams have gone to other parks. We're working with the Athletic Association there, it is an area of concern. That park has a capacity way beyond fifty-one participants, so we're actively talking to the Old National Athletic Association about how we move forward, because our goal is to serve our communities, and I agree with you, fifty-one is below what we would typically expect to see there. I think there are three current active teams there, and the past has many, as many as ten or twelve teams operating at Old National. So we recognize that there is a significant need to figure out a plan moving forward that makes better uses of our resources at Old National, and we're having that dialogue with the association now and looking at what else we need to consider.
And I guess I'm going to hark on, go on what Mr. Philippe just said. Do we have a sliding P scale? I mean, is there any, can we come up with a sliding P scale for that area?
We do not currently have one across all of our Parks and Recreation programs. That is a consideration that we've looked at, and we can certainly put together some information to present to our city manager, ultimately to the city council, about ways we can go about doing that, whether we connect that to free lunch in our school system, families that qualify for free lunch may qualify for a lower Parks and Recreation fees, looking at how we would validate that in a way that works reasonably for the staff numbers we have. We can certainly put that information together, it's an area we've looked at, and then forward to our city manager for consideration.
Okay, and I think my last one, I do know you said that, and I see Ms. Monford, she's sitting out, you said that she is over the concession stand.
Yes.
The funding that's raised there, does it go any ways towards assisting the children with their uniforms or anything of that nature?
It goes directly to assisting children at Old National. What I can tell you is without the concession stand currently at Old National, there are children who would not be able to participate.
Well, I know one of our main individuals, he's gone now, Mr. Lamar.
Certainly.
And he did quite a bit for Old National.
I, I.
Along with Ms. Monford, so I just, I'm, I'm just, just, I'm watching.
I have, Ms. Monford's done, along with all of our key stakeholders, who put so many hours and dedication into that park, has done an amazing job there for many years in trying to make sure the kids have an opportunity who might not otherwise. I, I know her probably a bit more personally than some of the other parks because I coached there, and my son played there, and I saw firsthand how that concession stand makes a difference at that particular park in opening the door for some kids. Coach Lamar would go around the community and pick up children to bring to the park. And so each park is different, and each park does a wonderful job in connecting to the community. We've got challenges, of course, and we understand what those are, and we look at them closely to make sure we can do a better job, but I've also seen a lot of people who puts a lot of dedication and hours into that park. I, I know for a fact that at each of our parks are people who regularly put in thirty hours a week on top of a full-time job. It's not easy to do. We've got room to grow and issues that we need to work on, but there are also some really positive stories that come out of each of these associations.
And my last, and I'm sure you all possibly have already addressed that, city manager, my understanding is the lights still have not been, and we talked about that last year.
So. The lights have not. They are working. I had that verified this afternoon. I got a text message. Oh, yes, ma'am, they're working as we speak. From time to time, folks do things that we would prefer them not to do, so all the lights are working. Someone went into the breaker box recently and cut off the master breaker, and when you do that, the lights won't come on, but we put a new lock on there. They were checked this afternoon, and the lights are working. I communicated with Kesheta Nalan, who was Ms. Monford's board, one of the board members there, and also talked with Coach Tony. So the lights are working, our staff was out there checking them this afternoon.
And I was told to ask you one question about the light folks, that's a link.
Yes, and so we are working with West Georgia Lighting, our vendor. They are ordering a pole to put in there. We've replaced eleven poles so far, that one needs to be replaced as well, and so we are working with our vendor to get that done as quickly as possible.
Ms. Williams, and then we'll conclude with Ms. Rock.
Thank you for the presentation. What is the deadline that you're going to require the maintenance fees to be paid for all youth athletic associations?
Santown has a hundred and twenty registrations in the system, and they have remitted a track for twelve hundred dollars to the city over thirty days ago. Currently, there are two hundred registrations in the system for Welcome All and approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars in fees currently in the system. We wanted to have this dialogue with the mayor and council before we move forward, but it would be my intention to ensure that all of those fees are paid before the end of this month.
Okay, so some of the feedback, and I see some of the coaches out in the audience, and I want to hear from you, so the mayor said that you all will be allowed to speak on public comments that could really be, but some of the feedback that I have received is that, although this is a new park ordinance, a lot of the processes in this ordinance did exist under the county, maintenance, maintenance fees specifically, and so the challenge that some of the teams are having is that that policy was never enforced, and now it's being enforced, and so as a result of it, they collected money with anticipation of keeping those fees because it was never enforced. And also, there is a question of whether or not the way we have the seat, the system set up, is it a violation of their five oh one C three organization? The other thing is, the way that Civic Rec was rolled out caused a lot of chaos, and I'm very disappointed because we've talked a lot about Civic Rec prior to Parks and Rec, transition into the city, and what was reported to this council is that meetings were taking place with the associations, and they were ready to go. And so when I hear from the associations, I'm being told that that was not the case. So it caused a lot of chaos, and it caused a lot of people to move away from, well, leave, and go, and not participate or go to other organizations and play.
If I may, speak directly to that. We began meeting with the association as early as late last year to let them know that there wouldn't be changes upon the transition. We had multiple meetings, in fact, we had several meetings where we showed the associations prior to approval, a copy of Parks Ordinance that included the language about Civic Rec. We had some very specific conversations about that. All of our associations at one point or another participated in those meetings, and so everyone was aware of what the changes would be. That doesn't mean everyone agreed with the changes or thought that they were timed well. I participated in every last one of those meetings and had a lot of real conversation with our stakeholders. This is very different than what they've done before. Some of them thought there were better ways to do it, some of them thought we should do it another way, but everyone had a chance to be a part of that dialogue. It wasn't surprise to anyone. Again, that doesn't mean that everyone agreed with the new ordinance, but it wasn't sprung on anyone without them having no knowledge that this was coming. They knew that the civic, the Parks Ordinance would require all registration fees to come to the city, all registration fees to go through Civic Rec. All of that was spoken to prior to the approval of the ordinance, and so we did what I believe was an adequate job of trying to reach out to our youth athletic associations. Change is always difficult, and so could there be things that we could have done better? I think there always are, but we made a very direct effort to make sure that we were having that conversation around what the specific changes would be and how they would affect our associations going forward. And again, most of our associations participated in more than one of those meetings as we were preparing to transition.
So most of the time, when systems are implemented, there's a testing model, and what it appears did not happen is when you are decided to choose Civic Rec and you went through a testing phase, or did you do a testing phase where you included feedback from the youth athletic associations to see if this system was going to be conducive to collecting from their program or whatever programs you are using the system for?
So the Civic Rec decision was made by the council, I believe, late last year?
Whoa, whoa, you said council, we don't know anything about Civic Rec.
No, 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 you asked me about a testing and implementation.
Okay, you said council.
So at the time that Civic Rec was chosen, we were still with the county. I knew that Civic Rec would be the selection, but we did not go through a process with the leadership at that time, which is not the leadership we have today, where there were options considered. where there were options considered and different things, should we use this or that? I was informed that Civic Rec would be the choice, but at the time, still being a county employee, I was not asked to make a differentiation between Civic Rec versus Active Net versus some other system. That choice was made, and then we began working with the Civic Rec vendor in December to start putting the system together that we would use, adding all of our programs into the system. Our rec manager, Janar Turner, some other staff members did a lot of hands-on work entering all of our programs into the system. And so, there wasn't a testing phase per se. The system had been selected. We began working with our vendor to shape the system for the City of South Fulton Parks and Recreation Department. And we began training our own staff who needed to know how to use the system when we transitioned on May twenty-eighth. That process took place for several months leading up to the transition, just ensuring that when we opened the doors on May twenty-eighth, our staff would be able to register someone, not only for youth athletics, but who wanted to come to Welcome All to use the weight room or go to Sandtown to use a gymnasium. It applies to everything we do, not just youth athletic associations. And so, we were building all of our process in the Civic Rec. That process took several months as well as training the staff, and we were ready to implement it on May twenty-eighth. During that time, as I mentioned, we did meet multiple times with athletic associations to tell them specifically what Civic Rec would do, how it would work. But there wasn't a testing model. It, it wasn't offered that way.
Okay, so um, we specifically honed in maintenance fees for youth athletic associations, but there has not been any conversations about collecting fees for other services that come into our parks, uh, parks, use our facilities, offer services. I mean, there are a lot of services that are being offered, and I don't think that our city now, new city is getting our fair share. So, we're gonna hold our youth athletic associations responsible for maintenance fees. I think we need to look and reevaluate every service that we are allowing third parties to come to our city and use, uh, and offer. We need to make sure we're getting our fair share of our maintenance fees from those services also. Because wear, tear on our facilities um are horrific. And what we are left to now repair, our fields, our fields are disrepair, um, our facilities are disrepair. And it's because we have allowed people to come in, capitalize, and profit off of our facilities and not give out their share. And Mr. Don, I would love to see a full-fledged audit done on Parks and Recreation at some point.
So, I think council member is in the budget, so as we've stated on multiple occasions, that will definitely happen. And so, once we pass the FY nineteen budget, that's one of the first things on there. I, I would say though, I'd like to probably respectfully push back and say that now, May twenty-eighth is when parks came over. And so, the first priority and the first sports that were up were the youth athletic programs. But when you look at our reports, based on the revenue that we're bringing in, while we're not capturing all of the revenue across the board, it's a big increase from what has been happening in the past. And I think that's because of the ordinances that you put in place and our staff are uh enforcing. And I also think this new technology helps us figure it out. One of the things that I was really excited about from hearing Mr. uh Phillips' presentation was that we are collecting those things. Civic Rec is in place and we are coordinating. But even in the areas where technology doesn't meet the gap, we're coming up with other solutions, including that for the concessions, which you know has been a problem for almost a decade in our parks. And so, we are solving that problem. So, while we do want to point out some of the nuances that haven't gone well, I still want to stick on the improved services that are being provided, provided by the city.
And I appreciate that, but I respectfully would like to point out, although we have approved our collection rate, I would love for our city to get their fair share from third-party vendors who are coming into our uh city offering their services. And I think we need to reevaluate all of those contracts, because if we're getting twenty and they're getting eighty of whatever services they're offering, I don't think that's fair. Um, I'm also would like to make sure that whatever concession services that we're being off, that's being offered, that they are health department regulated. Because if you're allowing people to pick with service, concession services are being used in our parks or being offered in our parks, if someone gets sick or someone deserves something, um, how, who's liable for that?
Uh, uh, again, I think those are excellent points that we one hundred percent agree with, which is why Mr. Phillips pointed to the master plan, which will help to kind of solve all of those issues. So, uh, I think the council has been adamant about not only our strategic plan, but our economic development master plan and our parks master plan. And I think it has resonated with us, and I hope that it resonates with our public, that this is a key piece for us to go from good quality services, which we're delivering now, to world-class. So, again, that master cla- that master plan uh is really the key to all this. And, and your statements, your thoughts, and, and uh what you put out there today is, is not only received well, but I think we're in a hundred percent agreement, and we look forward to the master plan.
Lastly, um, I would like to see, to make sure that our residents are included um in the master plan process. Are there any residents who would like to be um, give feedback on what they would like to see at their Parks and Recreation service? So, we need to make sure that we're going to surex as a part of that master plan um process.
We will include that in the RFP that goes out, Council on Rules, make sure that that is clear and distinct. I don't think it's possible to develop a viable master plan for our city without dialogue from our residents that is very clear and distinct. Not only so that we hear what they would like and know what their vision is, but so that they understand that we care about what each community wants to see. And so, we'll make sure that that is included in the RFP so that there's no guesswork involved, that there's a clear element for community involvement in that document so that it's certain that we get what we're looking for as we develop this master plan.
And when I go to other Parks and Recreation um facilities throughout Metro Atlanta, I do see where they are hosting tournaments, and they have jamborees, and I didn't, uh, the mayor didn't put it on the agenda this uh meeting, but it will be on the next meeting where I am doing a resolution requiring that you come up, you and your staff come up with a plan for twenty nineteen for us to host a football jamboree in the City of South Fulton to help us kick off football season. And so, in that plan, I hope that you will partner with one of our Fulton County schools. And um, we can use, we can allocate, and I put it in the resolution that we allocate some of that money to help um children who cannot afford to play football but would like to play.
Uh, we are aware of your uh desire to have that happen, and our restrictions manager, Janar Turner, and I have already begun looking at ways we can do that. Also think that increasing our partnership and work with local schools is key. And how we do that is to be determined. We've got some ideas that we'd like to formulate and pass on to our city manager. We often end up programming the same children that walk out of a Fulton County school and into a City of South Fulton Recreation Center. We think sharing resources, not only with football jamborees, but in some other areas, may be a positive path for us to consider. But we definitely hear you loud and clear on the football jamboree. I'm excited about it. I think it's a tremendous idea. And I'm looking forward to be one of those key cornerstone events for us in Parks and Recreation.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
We have a lot of conversation on that. Uh, Miss Rock has.
Couple of quick things. I know our last um presentation for Parks and Rec, I requested that the IT director meet with the Sandtown Athletic Association because they had a pretty sophisticated system. And I want to know the status. I know I heard that they have a hundred and twenty-two registrants. I don't know if that encompassed them all, but did that meeting take place or was?
I'm not sure. I, I defer to, to Mr. Strickland. And I can tell you that we've worked directly with them since the last meeting to ensure that all registrations.
It didn't happen. It didn't happen.
We work with them. I, I know our staff work with them to try to make sure that we had all of those hundred and twenty registrations in there. Um, getting some feedback as you hear that the meeting is not taking place yet, uh, and so, we'll be pushing forward on that.
Okay, then I have just a couple of other. I'd like you to touch on briefly your process for identifying vendors for the concessions. I know one of the things I had suggested is looking at our Fulton County Schools um culinary arts program at Bannaker, because one of those young people are already trained. They go through the service, safe certifications. And I know the school would make sure that the standards of those concessions would make sure we wouldn't have any of those issues that council will have. So, I'd, I'd like to hear about that. And um, one of the things, just doing the math, um, I think we have to be realistic. Even if you're talking ten dollars a head, nobody is going to be able to do the maintenance that's required on, in a park. If you look at those numbers, the total you're talking about is thirty-seven hundred dollars. So, I just want us to do the math on this as we had these conversations, whatever this model looks like. I also think we have to have a reality check on some of this as well. And so, for me, um, whatever plans, because I'm hearing right now um in my part that we need to be treating our fields by ants. So, I'm just saying, pest control would probably eat that cost. So, I think, again, whatever the true cost of maintaining our facilities, because I don't think that all bears on just one apartment. We saw the low maintenance across the facilities that we inherited for Fulton County. So, um, city manager, um, as we go forward with our first year of having full um, a full staff, looking at facilities maintenance, a real foot, uh, facilities maintenance plan, that we look at that and also taking account those kind of things like pest control and treating the fields and those kind of things. So, um, please, can somebody take a look at, at that at Sandtown? Because like I said, I know they've said they've had, had issues.
Yeah, so I, I'll tell you, I'll just take responsibility over the issues around uh IT not meeting with Sandtown yet. I was not aware that that didn't happen. So, knowing that we have some of those folks here, if you guys would stay and just provide Mr. Phillips with the time that they have available this week. You know, it's only a two-man band over there. We can make sure that they meet uh this week. As far as the maintenance activities, you know, Mr. Walker has visited all of those facilities. He's also very new, you know, been sixty days, but um he has started to do assessments on all of our facilities. And while the master plan will take care of some of those items, this new centralized service model will kind of accelerate it and give us some more control over maintenance. But it, it is on our radar.
Also, come on, Mr. Phillips, we have met with the Housing Recovery Center vendor and culinary program there. We hope to be able to build that into our concession models moving forward.
But you didn't touch on, how, how did you arrive at the current vendor?
We allow the associations who are currently operating to suggest to us who they wanted to use currently for the current football season. By the time the season concludes, which is typically around November, working with Mr. Kerr, we think we'll be at the juncture where we'll be able to bring forward to the city manager, ultimately to the council, a RFP process that has produced a vendor that's been selected to provide comprehensive concession services throughout the entire system. So, that will go through the procurement process. The current one that you saw in the presentation came from our consensus discussions with our associations.
What is the split on the structure in terms of vendor concessions?
Currently, the concessions are, we didn't do a split on the concessions that the associations currently have for this current season. Uh, they are using those concessions to support services that they provide in the parks I mentioned earlier at Old National, how it provides opportunity for children who otherwise would not be able to play. They are required to give us a financial statement within fourteen days of the conclusion of the season to detail specifically how much revenue was generated from the concession stand, as well as a full financial report. But there's currently not a split on the current season revenue for the operations that Ms. Monford is doing at Old National, one of the parents does at Sandtown, and the two vendors that they're using at Welcome All.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Let me uh, say also, I've been kind of lenient uh in terms of the amount of time that we're having to discuss. I always have something we want to put out. I would add that we be mindful uh that everybody's going to speak at the time of speaking. Uh, Mr. Black.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. Very quickly, I want to go through uh information related to hotel motel tax. Just to give you some brief background, I didn't get an opportunity to speak very much at the budget presentation. So, to speak to the reason why I'm talking about hotel motel tax. Many of my responsibilities in the City of Villarica where I came from, in addition to doing uh economic development, was also to manage the Main Street program. I also ran the office of film and entertainment, executive director, downtown development authority, and also the executive director of Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, having said that, when I took over tourism, uh, the City of Villarica was collecting five percent tax on hotel motel. Uh, and so, we worked through that process to get the hotel motel tax increased to eight percent. And so, the process that I'm going to talk about this evening is the same exact process that we went through in Villarica. I will say that we were successful in getting our legislation passed. I had a committee through the House and the Senate signed by the governor of the state of Georgia. So, I feel pretty confident in our ability to be able to do the same here in South Fulton as we look uh to do more of a related to hotel motel tax. Uh, very quickly, the reason why hotel motel tax is very important to the state of Georgia is, was mentioned earlier, the number one industry in the state of Georgia is agriculture, but the number two industry is tourism. Tourism supports right at about half a million jobs in the state, three point three billion dollars, local and state taxes, and sixty-three billion in uh direct spending uh to communities all over. Uh, I just wanted to share, uh, the state actually hires a firm that gives us the statistical data, and that firm breaks these numbers down to county level, but not to the city level. So, just to give you for Fulton County, just an idea of why hotel motel tax is so important to the state. Uh, in the cit- uh, in Fulton County, sixty-four thousand jobs are supported by tourism, just in Fulton County alone. Right now, in direct spending in, in Fulton County is eight billion dollars for people coming to visit Fulton County. Four hundred and fifty million of that goes to the state in rep, as far as taxes. Two hundred and fifty-four billion goes to local municipality, municipalities such as ours. Uh, and there is a tourism payroll directly related to jobs that service the tourism sector. Uh, it's two point five billion dollars in payroll. So, uh, just to give you an indication, the state likes to break it down so you can talk to your constituents about uh this number. Because of tourism, we offset the tax burden to the, our constituents by one thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars. So, to put that in perspective, we would have to tax each household in Fulton County extra eighteen hundred dollars to make up for the impact that tourism has in Fulton County. Uh, so, I go through those numbers to let you know that uh tourism is a very serious business for the state of Georgia, and that's the reason why the hotel motel tax law, as written the way it is, basically what they're doing is they're requiring municipalities to reinvest the hotel motel tax into tourism so they can keep that number growing each year. Um, and so, that's the reason why it's so very specific on how we expend hotel motel tax in our city. Uh, very quickly, the law is broken up into three sections. The first part is the basic three percent. That three percent municipalities can use in any way that they see fit. As I mentioned in an earlier meeting, you can buy basketballs with that, you can buy police cars, you can buy anything that you want with that first three percent. Uh, if you collect anything above that three percent though, you have, you go into specific restrictions that are required by state law. Uh, so, the next provision is for a collection of five percent. We can pass an ordinance here in the City of South Fulton without any uh legislation to start collecting at five percent. If you collect anything over that five percent, you have to have uh specific legislation from the General Assembly in order to be able to collect at six, seven, and eight percent hotel motel tax. And I will say um for the record that it makes sense to charge eight percent hotel motel tax, because as I tell people, that hotel motel taxes, taxes from ninety-five to ninety-eight percent are paid from people visiting our city. So, we're not getting that money from our constituents. We're getting that money from people who are, who are here visiting. We then turn around and take that money and invest it in our community to benefit our constituents. So, um, it makes sense to do eight percent, uh, because it's our ability to impact our community in a more positive manner. One thing that I, I want to make sure that we understand is when we talk about promotion, the state is very specific on you spending those other restricted funds to promoting tourism, to attract people to your community. And just as a domino effect, attracting people to spend tourism money in the state as a whole. Uh, this is just a better breakdown of the graph to explain how the pennies break down. Again, if you're collecting at five percent, two of those pennies are restricted. You're collecting six pennies, three, uh, four, and five as you collect each percentage. So, specifically about the law that um speaks to the six, seven, and eight percent, uh, it, it. So specifically about the law that speaks to the six, seven, and eight percent, a hundred percent or at least fifty percent of those pennies have to go to a destination marketing organization or a DMO. There's a lot of reasons why I think that that law is written like that. The DMOs have to be organized under the IRS as a nonprofit organization, specifically as a 501(c)(6). Most entities that are organized as a 501(c)(6) or a chamber of commerce. So I seen when the law was written in two thousand and eight, my estimation of what happened is the chamber lobbyists lobbied the state to make sure that it was very specific on what entities could spend that hotel motel tax, which is why you see in most communities, chambers are the ones that are the DMOs for hotel motel tax. However, the state does allow for you to enter into a contract and agreement with authorities to expend that hotel motel tax. So it's either 501(c)(6) or an authority that can spend or be representative as your DMO. I just want to make sure that the city cannot expend those money. They have to have a third party to engage in activity of tourism, of tourism marketing promotion for the city. The other remainder of that, six, seven, and eight percent or a percentage of that, or usually it's equals to about one point five, goes to tourism product development. And the purpose of tourism product development is so that you're continuously investing money in structures, facilities, or any kind of physical thing that attracts people to the community. So basically, it's the state's way of saying, we want municipalities to continue to invest in tourism infrastructure, not just marketing and promoting the community. Again, I spoke to this earlier, these are types of DMOs, as I mentioned, authorities, nonprofit organizations that are organized under the (c)(6) provision of IRS. Again, CQBs set up by the state. And then municipalities can expend tourism product development money. So the one point five percent, the city can expend that tourism product development directly. They don't have to enter into a third party to do that. Again, this is to give you an idea of some of the things that we can do. So tourism product development, so we talked about a public art program, which I think is very great. I think that that is, most communities are putting a lot of money and resources in art development. I think that that is something signature that we could do as a community that would drive people to our community. And so, that would be an example of something that we could do with this tourism product development money. Again, this is an exhaustive list that the state provides, but any facility that you could think of that's for recreation, amusement, hunting, visiting, anything related to that. It's a very broad list. It's made broad intentionally so you don't get so bogged down, but it's very wide-ranging on the things that we could do with that tourism product development. Again, specifically, if you're going to collect six, seven, and eight percent in your annual budget, you have to specify what tourism product development things you're going to do each year, so that way we can monitor that. State wants to be able to say, hey, you spent this money on these particular items that were in compliance with the state law. And so, basically, that would be the requirement for us each year to do. And so, this is just for discussion. It's very specific and up to the council whether or not, what percentage rate they would like to collect. If it is the council's will that we do six, seven, and eight percent, I've laid out kind of the outline of how that works here on this slide. And basically, what we would do here is we would pass a local resolution specifically asking our delegation to introduce legislation on our behalf. It would spell out what we want to do with the six, seven, and eight percent. Then they would then introduce that and then make its way through the process. Now, the state capitol, the governor would sign the bill that would come back to us, and then we would create a local ordinance related to what we want our hotel collection to be. And then he would submit that ordinance to DCA for them to monitor our compliance. And having said that, I'm answering your questions.
Okay. I've been reminding, reminding, we have two other presentations to go, and I will be doing this in a clock. So first.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say, I had a 4:30 meeting scheduled so that I could get most of my questions out today, and nobody showed up. So I would ask that you please be patient with me.
You have five minutes and then you can wrap your round.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I have a 4:30 meeting scheduled, and I scheduled my meeting ahead of time, and nobody showed up to my meeting, the attorney, the attorney, and myself.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, go ahead. Councilwoman Willis, I do apologize, we had a scheduling conflict and then making it over in time for the meeting.
All right. My question is, we passed an ordinance for public arts, and in the verbiage of the ordinance, what it stated was that we wanted to allocate three percent of the overall hotel tax allocation to the public arts commission. And so, to bring us in compliance, did I, do I understand you correctly that we would more than likely to remove that, wait until we get approval from the delegation or from the General Assembly to collect above the five percent? And then we specify in that, once we get that approval, we specify in that legislation that we want that portion, that collection to go towards public arts?
Well, in current state law, we can collect five percent without any General Assembly intervention. So we could allocate the first three pennies to public art if we wanted to. It's at the discretion of the council how they expand those first three pennies.
Okay. I would like to revisit that, because Mr. City Manager, what is your opinion? Because if we are going through the budget process, and I would think those first three pennies should go to the general fund if we're not within the audit required that we have like a three percent reserve, and it's my understanding, we're nowhere near that.
Well, so in addition to having a reserve, it also allows you to be able to have a plan in which you'll be able to rectify those issues. Your actual budget, not only as presented, but also when we present our balanced budget will meet that requirement. I think you've seen that it is our proposal to be in the black within year three of our existence. And so, that would satisfy that plan to be able to eliminate that debt, et cetera, et cetera, and be able to meet that audit requirement. I'd say as far as the allocation and what my recommendation is, while I'm not against the three percent, I think we've had some internal discussions and we would rather have a more formal recommendation when we bring it forward for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Councilman Lee?
I have a suggestion for that three percent. It has become a find in the clear to me, especially in our zoning hearings, that we need a development authority. And I am interested in us having a downtown development authority. And I'm wondering, would that qualify as a 501(c)(6) organization? Could you use those DMO funds to fund a development authority?
It would certainly qualify. As I tell people, as I always say when I make recommendations, my recommendation is going to be of course the highest and best use, and obviously it's the council's prerogative to make the decision after that. I would say that right now, today, we're not prepared to say what to use that money for. I would, at the council's pleasure, would like to bring back something formal, some recommendations that we could do. I will say that I have seen it done that way before. That's how we funded the program where I came from, but definitely there are some other things that we can do with that as well.
And were we not able to come to a consensus in this fiscal year? Would those funds roll over? Did we lose access to those funds?
Technically, you're supposed to expand all the funds at the end of your fiscal year. You're not allowed to carry the money over. So that's one thing that the state doesn't want you to do, is to hold on to the funds.
So we have until September thirtieth of twenty nineteen to use whatever funds we collect in that fiscal year. Lastly, I do see that it is six thirty, and we have two more items. I know we need to have an executive session. We are either going to have an executive session at the end of our meeting, or we're going to have one now and move these two items to the end of the meeting. I don't want to disrespect the people who have come. I do also know that our meetings seem to go better when we have the executive session before rather than after. So I think that we, when we're done with this question and answer session, we need to consider how we're going to proceed to respect both our presenters and the constituents that will be coming.
I agree. I agree with you, Mr. Lee. Okay. Ms. Gilliard?
Thank you so much for your presentation. My, for sure, comment is that this is an excellent opportunity to expand in some new areas and to, of course, generate some revenue that we don't have right now. And what I want us to do is stop, take a deep breath, and focus on that four-letter word that I always talk about, and it's called planning, such that we get together and decide what it is that we want, what direction that we're going to go in. And once we get to that point, I think we can better decide whether it's going to be three percent, five percent, eight percent, or whatever. But that's a discussion to have, as well as the economic development discussion, as well as the strategic, you know, strategic planning. You can't do any of this without planning. So I just want to.
I will end with Ms. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we recessed to do executive session at this time, and then a lot more of the presentations to be heard at the top of the regular meeting.
Say. Executive session will what?
First, we never listed a litigation.
Okay. All right. I'll be losing second. Any discussion I'll do in the second? That passes. We're going to take the decision.